Okay. I will call to order the regular meeting of the Board of Education, which was duly noticed on October 7th, 2022 through posting a notification in the press in accordance with Wisconsin 19.84. We have first the Fledge of Allegiance. Commissioner Millard.
Thank you, Board President Myers. It's my pleasure to introduce Jennifer Fanning, the Principal at Kennedy Elementary. Ms. Fanning has 28 years in education, 17 years as a teacher in the school district of Janesville, where she taught 4th grade, talented and gifted resources teacher, and 3rd grade. Jennifer has five years as a principal in Beloit and six years as the principal at Kennedy Elementary School. Her education includes a master's degree in education, an additional licensure for Director of Instruction and Principal. Currently, Jen is working on, with the University of Madison, on her doctoral program for educational leadership and policy analysis. Principal Fanning, who do you have with you tonight?
I am very honored to introduce some of our student leaders from Kennedy with us tonight. So starting over here, Sawyer Salzberg, he's a 4th grader and one of our Student Council members, leader and outstanding student at Kennedy. Also have Isla Morse. Isla is a 5th grader at Kennedy, also a student leader, part of our Student Council. And this is Lydia Ricks, a 5th grader at Kennedy and also part of our Student Council. All three students are amazing leaders, show our PBIS expectations every day and are role models for others. So we're very thrilled to have them representing Kennedy tonight.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Thank you very much. Okay, safety message. Commissioner Murray. I beg your pardon, you're right about that. Okay. So, and also we should mention that we're going to do roll call votes tonight because we have Commissioner Hanawal on the phone. So, can I have a motion? All sorts of technical difficulties tonight. So let me say this again. We're going to have to do a roll call vote to approve the agenda tonight because we have Commissioner Hanawal on the phone. Do I have a motion to adopt the agenda? Whoa, I got that in stereo. So, I'm going to go with Commissioner Hayworth and then the second for Commissioner, with Commissioner Murray. So, roll call vote. Commissioner Audrey is absent. Commissioner Dahmerhausen? Yes or no? Commissioner Hanawal? Commissioner Hanawal?
Yes.
Commissioner Hayworth? Commissioner Herta is absent. Commissioner Millard?
Yes.
Commissioner Murray?
Yes.
Commissioner Paul?
Yes.
Commissioner Myers?
Yes.
That vote passes 7-0.
Thank you very much.
Now on to the safety message. Commissioner Murray.
Good evening, everybody. It's fire prevention week. And first of all, thanks to the school district of Janesville for embracing safety, but allowing the fire department to come into the schools and talk about fire safety with our, our students, give little tours and all that. So, I would assume everybody in this room has seen that Donald Duck movie narrated by Jiminy Cricket, exit drills in the home, right? I mean, if you've been using it, Kurt, you have never seen it. Get a copy too. But it's exit drills in the home. It's called Edith. It's good to practice exit drills in your home with your family. It actually can be fun for the parents and the children, practice getting out, where to go, stay out, or get out, stay out, kind of thing. What else do they have? How about, how about stop, drop, and roll? What else? Stay low on the smoke. So it's fire prevention week. Take care of your smoke detectors, take care of your little people and your spouse in your home, practice fire safety. And the last question I would say is if you have a bedroom on the second floor, and assuming you sleep with the door closed because you don't want the fire or smoke to get in there, and you check your door and it's too hot or smoky out there and you have to exit out your window, do you know how to get your window open? Has somebody on the outside got a ladder that can reach that window to get you out safely? I don't know. You better check. So, there you go. That's my message.
Thank you very much. I just looked it up. It's from 1965. So, I do remember that video, but it's been a while. You weren't born yet, probably. Okay. Thank you very much, Commissioner Murray. Our student presenters tonight, first we have from Craig High School, Ms. Charlotte Mark. Welcome. It's good to see you again.
Thank you, you as well. Hello, members of the school board. My name is Charlotte Mark. And this year, I'm actually Executive Board President for Craig's Student Council, but our regular school board representative, Morgan, was unable to make it tonight, so Dr. Beyond asked me to present this evening, so that is fine. To begin, we recently welcomed the class of 2026 to Craig. They were led by our link leaders on their first day and participated in teamwork activities in small groups to help make their transition to high school easier. In terms of student life, the year has already had some significant events. Junior Maya Nicholson finished the first round of the state girls tennis tournament yesterday with a tie for 7th place. Four members of the girls tennis team will be competing at state, at the state level, starting this Thursday. Senior Carissa Norland and junior Hattie Plenty will compete as doubles partners, with sophomore Raya Ariazola and freshman Lexi Henkel competing in the singles division. Craig also hosted the 84th Midwest Invitational Cross Country Meet at Blackhawk Golf Course at the end of September. The girls team placed 8th and the boys team placed 18th, led by seniors Kara Riley and Jack Austin. Last Thursday, the junior classes' student council organized a Red Cross blood drive. They had 83 donors and the blood donated could potentially save 179 lives. This is Craig's Homecoming Week, and the hallways are all decorated for their respective grades and themes, thanks to student council members. For example, the seniors theme is spaced out seniors with our motto being "To Infinity and Beyond," so if you visit Craig, you'll see Dr. Beyond's face pasted all over the senior hallway. Also, voting will take place each day this week for the best dressed students according to the dress of day. Winners will receive prizes like gift cards and free homecoming tickets. Looking ahead, Craig's parade will take place Thursday afternoon and the pep assembly will be held Friday afternoon in the, in the main gym. At the assembly, students will watch and participate in competitive games and races, and the homecoming king and queen will be announced. After, outdoor inflatable activities will be offered to students and the Powder Puff football game will be held on the practice fields. Later that night, the football team will face Madison Memorial at Monterey Stadium. Conferences will be held Wednesday, October 26th, and Thursday, October 27th, with no school that Thursday or Friday. The end of the first quarter will be Thursday, November 3rd. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very, very much. And next from Parker High School, we have Sarah Zimmerman. Welcome, Sarah.
Hello, I'm Sarah Zimmerman. I'm a senior at Parker. I'm actively involved in many activities such as girls golf, National Honor Society, and I am the deca president of this year's chapter. Last week was Wisconsin School Board Week. Parker High School appreciates the work and time each of you put into your service to the Janesville School District. Thank you for all that you do for me and my peers. Parker Student Leadership Council planned a great homecoming full of activities last week, including themed dress up days, the pep assembly, parade, and the school dance. The theme was Glow the Night Away, and homecoming king was Ryland Pagel, and queen was Natalia Tomas. On September 22nd, the Parker Adventure Fayad teachers Keith Miller and Renee Koloff took 70 seniors down to the Sugar River canoeing. Students put in the canoes at EE Boat Landing and paddled about one and a half hours downstream, portaged over the Albany Dam, and continued another one and a half hours before taking out at Sweet Minahaha Campground. Prior to the trip, students learned parts of the canoe, boat or safety, and practiced canoeing skills in our school pool. It was a great experience on the river and a great day to be a Parker Viking. Parker is proud to host 14 international students for this school year. The students are visiting from China, Colombia, Germany, Japan, and Spain. The school district of Janesville started a partnership with two schools in Rosario, Argentina, 25 years ago. Yearly, the school district invites Argentine student, exchange students to Parker for a short-term visit in October, then the students from Janesville may travel to Argentina for two weeks in June. This year, the Argentine students arrived in Janesville on October 1st and are leaving on Friday, October 14th. The students stayed with families of Parker students while they were here and were able to experience things that they do not experience in Argentina, such as homecoming week. They got to participate in our fun and crazy dress up days. They got to see the pep assembly and the parade, and they even got to enjoy some fall activities like corn mazes and carving pumpkins, which they do not do in Argentina. They also were presenting to our Parker Spanish classes while they were here. Join us for the 40th Annual Parker Band Chili Supper Sunday, November 6th, from 11:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. in the Parker Cafeteria. Listen to the band perform as you enjoy some delicious chili, check out the raffle baskets, silent auction, and maybe even take home some cash from the 50/50 raffles. It's $12 for ages 12 through adult, $5 for ages 4 through 10, and free for children 3 and under. And in the world of athletics at Parker, last week, we enjoyed our homecoming parade, athletic competitions, and our school dance. Here's a quick recap of the week ahead. Coach Hartwig, Coach McChristie, and our entire cross-country team are getting ready for the Big Eight Conference meet this week. Football has one more regular season game this Friday at La Follette. And girls golf finished the season with an 8-2 record in the Big Eight. We had two girls go to sectionals, Maddie Olson and myself. In addition, Janesville Parker was proud to host the WIAA sectional golf tournament at the country club last week. And our swim team has a couple more weeks before their Big Eight Conference invite. Congrats to Coach Brant and our tennis team for a successful fall season. Soccer hosts Verona in their last home game of the season on Thursday. Parker High School is proud to host the Big Eight Conference Girls Volleyball Tournament this Saturday. Parker's cheer and pom teams continue to do a great job at all of our home football games. Now, some news from Parker Arts Academy and the Parker Choir. Parker Choirs will perform their fall concert on October 19th at 7:00 p.m. at the Parker Auditorium. 39 Parker High School tenor and bass students participated in the UW Milwaukee Sing Out Choir Festival led by Dr. Zachary Durham. Students learned and performed three multicultural songs with nearly 1,000 other high school students. The Parker Arts Academy is busy rehearsing "Mamma Mia!", their fall musical, with a cast and crew of nearly 60. The music of ABBA makes us all smile. Performances will be held November 11th through 13th and 18th through the 20th at the Parker High School Auditorium. There is an ABBA mashup of songs at the end, so dancing and singing along is expected. And finally, Parker Decca is off to a great start this year with many community service activities coming up of the month of October. Our next one is actually tomorrow night at Washington for their Oktoberfest. Business partnerships will continue to expand this school year as Parker Decca works with new businesses this year. And they also hosted their first meeting on September 19th with over 75 members. So, thank you for your time today.
Thank you very much and congratulations. Okay, we are up here, let's see, here, 1.6 Citizen Comments. I have only one, Ms. Renee Bliss. Ms. Bliss, when you get here, would you state your name and your address for the record, please?
I'm surprised it's not in print, I've been here so many times. My name is Renee Bliss. My address is 1717 Green Forest Run, Janesville, Wisconsin. Do you need the zip code? Okay, good. It's for something, I know it is. I am actually here for a couple of reasons. I am now a member of the Wisconsin Council on Special Education with DPI. It is, October is Bullying Prevention Month, which is why I'm here, because I just attended the State Superintendent Conference on Special Education, and what I learned broke my, absolutely broke my heart, because there are a lot of things that in my region, which is Rock County, that I cover and report that were missing. One of the biggest things is something called a District Family Engagement Liaison. It is something that is supposed to be assigned from every school district. We do not have one listed. In other words, the families do not have a voice officially that work with the school district and work with DPI to be able to not only help the families, bring more awareness, bring more resources. A lot of the organizations that I got to meet with today, which was the conference, a lot of the families down here aren't even aware exist, a lot of the services available. Another thing that I realized is many of the minority and special education families are being overlooked in this city. I have numbers already of bullying incidences in our middle school and high schools so far this year, and we're what, six weeks into the school year? That's unacceptable, especially considering the fact that this month is Bullying Prevention Month. We should be paying more attention to how to prevent it, how to stop these atmospheres and environments in our middle schools and high schools for it being okay. I have families that have already gathered testimonies to take to our next meeting, including my, my son's experiences at Craig, Edison, and Marshall. He didn't go to Franklin, so I can't mention Franklin, but the new director and the superintendent were completely unaware of just how bad it is down here. They didn't even know about the suicides that we had in our school district. How does that happen? It is now up to me. I am, been asked to begin training for the District Family Engagement Liaison for the Janesville School District. Don't know all of what that entails, but I really, really would like to see a lot more proactive moves being made in our schools and school board to protect our kids, especially those that don't have a voice and those that are darker than me. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I appreciate you. Okay, moving on to our consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda? Okay, Commissioner Dahmerhausen? Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Commissioner Millard. So we are going to do a roll call vote. Commissioner Dahmerhausen? Commissioner Hanawal?
Yes.
Commissioner Hayworth?
Yes.
Commissioner Herta is absent. Commissioner Millard?
Yes.
Commissioner Murray?
Yes.
Commissioner Paul?
Yes.
Commissioner Audrey is absent. Commissioner Myers?
Yes.
That passes 7-0. Thank you so much. Board items. Consider approval for the administration's recommendation for Assistant Principal for Edison Middle School. Mr. Gardner's unavailable, so... Whoops, so Mr., well, I still want to hear. Come on up.
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second from, motion from Commissioner Murray, second from Commissioner Millard.
Good evening, commissioners. The administration recommends the hire of Mr. Guy Stricker for the vacant Edison Assistant Principal position. If you'll remember, we had a late resignation in late August for that position. We had 19 applicants. Four of them were interviewed by a panel of nine with administrative and the school staff. Mr. Stricker received his bachelor's degree in English from Whitewater, master's degree from Cardinal Stritch, and spent nine years in education, the last two of which he's been in administration in the Parkview School District. We're excited to have Guy. We would like him to start tomorrow after your approval. He's given a one-year contract that will be prorated. Typically, our assistant principals work 219 and a half days. This will be prorated from his start date and his start date, and his salary will be prorated from the 94,375. That's in your packet.
Any questions? Okay, thank you so much. I'm seeing none. We, we have a motion and, but I don't think this is a, it's not an action item. Oh, there it is. Okay, I'm sorry. Okay, so could we have a roll call, please? And everyone is confident with the motion that's on the board? Okay. Commissioner Hanawal?
Yes.
Commissioner Hayworth?
Yes.
Commissioner Herta is absent. Commissioner Millard?
Yes.
Commissioner Murray?
Yes.
Commissioner Paul?
Yes.
Commissioner Audrey is absent. Commissioner Dahmerhausen?
Yes.
Commissioner Myers?
Yes.
That passes 7-0. Thank you very much. Thank you. Yeah. Okay, so next on our agenda, 3.2, is a presentation on student expulsion, the student expulsion process and procedures. You should have this packet.
Okay, good evening. The purpose tonight is to provide an opportunity for the board to have a brief workshop on the process and role and expectations of our board members specifically regarding expulsion of students. And so, tonight, I have with me Kim and Sarah, who will be walking the board through what happens prior to a student expulsion, the process during the expulsion with the independent hearing officer, the closed session or potentially open, I guess, that would happen during the board's deliberation, and then the process throughout that. So obviously, if you have any questions, we definitely want to be able to answer that. And our goal, obviously, at no time is to expel students. We obviously want students to continue to be educated here, but there are times where their behavior is, to an extent, that we have to bring those forward for the safety and well-being of the students and others. So I will turn it over to, to Kim, and she's going to start with the process at the building level and then move from there.
So, students may be expelled from school when they endanger the property, health, and/or safety of others. When building administration believes the severity of student conduct falls within this category, he or she will conduct a full investigation to provide to district administration for review regarding a recommendation of expulsion. A firearm on school property per state statute is an automatic recommendation for expulsion. If recommendation for expulsion is approved to move forward with, expulsion procedures then begin through the Office of the Superintendent and the Office of Student Services. If the student has an individualized education plan or a Section 504 plan, a manifestation/determination meeting is scheduled. This meeting is held to determine if the incident is related to the student's disability by looking at if the student has a pattern of this type of behavior, or if the incident was due to the district not implementing the student's 504 or IEP. If the answer is no to both of those questions, the incident is not considered a manifestation of the student's disability, and the expulsion moves forward. If the answer is yes to either or both of those questions, the student is able to be returned to his or her educational setting, and the expulsion recommendation is null and void. The district may ask parents to agree to an alternative, alternative setting depending on the conduct in question instead of returning to the original educational setting. If the parents do not agree, the district does have the right to move to due process. And now Sarah is going to talk about the actual expulsion hearing and then move into closed session in which she takes the recommendation forward to the board.
Okay, and I am so delighted that so many of you have come to participate or observe in the expulsion hearing process, because I think that we can describe it and we can talk about it, but unless you've actually been there, I don't know if you get a feeling for the dynamic, and I really appreciate the commitment of the board that you have demonstrated to come and observe some of these hearings, because I think you really get a taste of how the process goes when you observe it firsthand. So, once the, the case has moved forward to an expulsion, if there's been a manifestation hearing, that's already taken place, and obviously, as you know, I specifically tell families if that's taken place, that that cannot be considered again at the expulsion. We simply need to go forward and determine whether the facts are present, present for the, the expulsion to unfortunately have to occur. It is a closed hearing, and that means that's respecting the confidentiality of the student and their family. At the hearing, we have the child and the family. Certainly, we, we want the child and the family to be present. Sometimes we are unable to get them there for a variety of reasons, but they all, we also invite anybody else who chooses to come and participate on behalf of the family, for example, an advocate or someone like that. We have representatives of the school district, and that may include a student resource officer if there's a concern or a threat of safety or to provide information. Then, obviously, I'm present as the independent hearing officer, and then this, as I've mentioned, the school board commissioners who choose to attend. During the hearing, evidence is taken, and what is essential from the perspective of whether or not to actually have an expulsion is the, the basis of the expulsion must be contained in the information that's been shared with the family, that they've had a chance to review, and we call that the expulsion packet. And just so you know, that other information that comes in during the expulsion can be considered in terms of the duration of the expulsion or conditions of early reinstatement, but there must be sufficient evidence within that expulsion packet to expel, or you can't expel, the child. Now, once we come to a conclusion whether the interests of the school district demand the expulsion, then that's the point where I make the findings and conclusions and state that, in fact, the expulsion needs to occur. And as anybody who's been present, you know that the, we always explain to the family that the findings and conclusions attempt to balance the right of the student's right to a public, public education with the interests of the district in a safe, productive learning environment. So that's the goal. The next step is the board's role after the expulsion hearing. And I brought with me a couple of, I'm, I'm not real great with slides, and I apologize for that, but we as lawyers, we read a lot of statutes and we read a lot of case law. So I brought with you, for anybody who's interested, a copy of 120.13, which describes in very small print, and I apologize for that, the school board's authority to expel, or excuse me, your authority to review decisions of the independent hearing officer and your role. And then I also made copies of case law. And what we attorneys do with case law is we mark things up. So, we do that so that it draws our attention to what's most... So we do that so that it draws our attention to what's most relevant in the case law, and so I took the liberty of making a few marks on the case law to draw your attention to what I believe is most relevant. First point, and again, I'm just picking little points that I think are the most important for purposes of tonight, but that is that the evaluation of the expulsion decision by the board is by an impartial tribunal, and you guys are the impartial tribunal, okay? And what that means is that unfortunately, in a small town, sometimes we feel like we know something about a situation, but that needs to be set aside because in your role as an impartial tribunal, if you do feel, if you would know people, if you would feel a particular interest in an expulsion, that might be a bias, and that's when it's time to say, wow, I might not be appropriate to be sitting on this expulsion. And that's okay. There's nothing to be ashamed of. If you feel like you have that, it's just something to bring to everybody's attention, and you can step out, you can abstain from voting on that particular expulsion. Now, the statute is very clear. It says you can accept, reject, or modify the recommendation of the independent hearing officer. But the kind of confusing part about that is that DPI, when they review decisions on expulsion, they kind of clarify what that means. And what they say is that they really don't want a second hearing in front of the board. They want the board to exercise its discretion to do what boards do, which is to look at policy, look at consistency, and make sure that the independent hearing officer's decision hits the right chord, gets the right balance between the student's right to a public education and the interests of the school in having the safe, productive environment. So that's really the board's role, once you guys decide to have an independent hearing officer, is to make sure that the independent hearing officer is doing his job, his or her job, her job, as opposed to basically conducting a second hearing. And the reason why I got a copy of this case for you guys, the Madison Metropolitan School District versus Burnmaster, is because the Court of Appeals, yeah, the Court of Appeals was reviewing a decision by the superintendent of Department of Public Instruction, DPI. And what you get in here is both what the Court of Appeals had to say, but also what DPI had to say about the review of the IHO decision. And basically, what DPI said, and that's the authority to which an expulsion is appealed, what DPI said is, you really don't want to have a second hearing in front of the board. You want to make sure the independent hearing officer did their job. And in fact, if evidence would show that the board relied on extraneous information, information that was not presented at the hearing, that that would be a problem, and that the expulsion would be reversed on that basis. And so once again, that's why I encourage board members, please come to these hearings and get a taste of what it's like to try to do that balance, because I work for you guys, and I want you guys to feel good about the decisions that we make. We did kind of have some do's and don'ts, just in terms of what is appropriate oversight for the board, and we just kind of summarized those things. Policy oversight, we want to make sure, again, we're getting that right chord in balancing the student's right to the education with the safety and productivity of the school environment. And if you feel like the decisions are not hitting that right note, that right chord, you want to have a policy discussion, please, that's the time to engage in that. But I just want to caution that sometimes that's difficult if you haven't been present at the hearing because you didn't hear from the family, and you didn't kind of get, for lack of a better word, kind of the vibe of where that appropriate note would be. Then it's entirely appropriate for you guys to conduct an inquiry to ensure that there's follow-up with the student and family regarding opportunities during the expulsion, or alternate placement if the student is not entitled to come back on early reinstatement. And then, again, offer input on policy decisions that may guide the administration and me as your independent hearing officer in the future regarding certain types of expulsion cases. And just to reiterate, again, because it's so clear from the statute and from the review of these decisions, that there's always the danger that people bring extraneous information or personal bias into these decisions, and the case law and the statute really caution against that. So I just want to remind everybody of that going forward. Now is the time to ask for questions? Okay.
Questions, folks?
Thanks, everybody, for taking your time to do all this for us. Appreciate it. So let's say Kevin Murray's been a bad boy.
I can't imagine.
Yeah, well. That's me. That's my name. I'm not, that's, to make it clear, that's.
There's not a student named Kevin Murray?
Yeah. Student X. And we get the board packet, and it comes before the board, and the recommendation is this. And so my one question to clarify is then, are we being told that the board can then say, well, we think it should be less than or more than the recommendation? That's, is that a true statement, then?
The statute gives the board the power to do that, absolutely. The decision that I distributed to you guys kind of, sometimes it's a lot more gray than what the statute might make it appear to be because the case law that describes the statute or that type of an action basically says, but if you do it for the wrong reasons, you could be violating other portions of the law.
So the board would have to be careful not to say things like, well, he's a good kid, or I know his mom or grandma, and you have to have a basis in past practice or policy or, I guess, just a consensus that we think it should be less or more. So I know there's a lot of gray area there. So again, you know, we get Kevin Murray's been, student X has been bad, up for expulsion, and the board thinks, geez, we think it should be a little more strict, strict or, or, you And part of the packet says, well, we have opinion on, from other staff and teachers that think, well, Kevin's a good kid, he should get a second chance. So is that information is not fact, that's just opinion, so that really shouldn't have any bearing on the expulsion? You know, because it's a third-party opinion on somebody's.
Well, what I will say is that at the actual hearing where people are present, one of the, and essentially, I'm the fact finder, and it's the finder of facts job, one of the jobs is to weigh credibility and to decide what weight to give certain people's opinions. And the difficulty, when you step outside of that actual hearing context, is that the words on paper might not have the same, you might, you don't get the same feeling, you don't get the same opportunity to weigh the credibility and to give different weight to those factors. So although relying on the materials in the expulsion packet would be an appropriate thing for the board to do in deciding what to do with that recommendation, it would, I would again, just caution that if you weren't actually at the hearing, it's difficult to put yourself in the position of the people who actually were there, and basically, the people you hired to do the job.
Again, thank you very much for taking your time to explain this to us. It's a great exercise for all of us to review and understand. And Sarah, you, I don't know how long you've been doing this for us, but you do outstanding work.
Thank you.
And the support you get from Kim and her staff and everyone else has been outstanding. So thanks.
Other comments or questions? Yes, Commissioner Hayworth?
Yeah, I would echo that. Sarah, we are so lucky to have you because the hearings I've gone to, the grace and compassion you show in these situations, or these hard situations, I mean, they're heartbreaking, many of them, you show everybody respect right from the start all the way through the end, and you do a really, really good job. You've moved me to tears multiple times, and you know that. So anyway, we're lucky to have you. Thank you for what you do. I know you don't have to do this for us. I guess my only question that I would like clarification on is, first, a comment on one of the board's should-not, is the raise the extraneous or share personal information. So I guess I totally get, if it's like a, yeah, oh, I know Kevin's mom, you know, whatever, that kind of a thing. But parenting, I feel like we are elected board members because we are supposed to bring our personal perspectives to this board, so we're elected by people. We're elected by people who see us, you know, many of us are current parent, not many of us, few of us are current parents, and parenting today is really scary versus what it might have been before and situations. So when we bring perspectives like that, we're thinking about who we're putting, I mean, I've got a middle schooler and a high schooler, so I'm thinking about who are my kids being with every day, and do I want, you know, that's a risk that, that's a perspective I'm going to bring, because I feel like that's what I'm supposed to do as a board member and being elected. So that's just my commentary on how I'm taking that board should-not comment. So the clarification on the ability to modify. So if you're, if we all agree the expulsion, yeah, should go forward, but maybe one of the consequences is the student is out for a year, and we say, no, it should be two years. Is that what you're saying brings it to another hearing, which the DPI warns against?
What I would say is that it depends on what you're relying on, but it walks a line. It's getting, you know, if the board wishes to make a policy decision that in a certain type of offense, that these should be treated a certain way, and it's a broad-reaching policy decision, I think that that's much easier to justify to a reviewing entity as opposed to the situation, these facts, and then if anything is brought up in closed session during deliberations that could be perceived as extraneous information, I think it gets much closer to the area that DPI's gonna have a problem with it. The other concern, and I, you know, again, give this weight what you choose, but the other concern is if a penalty is higher, the family is probably more likely to appeal that. So it's a concern in the sense that, you know, I assume at the conclusion of an expulsion, the district wants some closure, and, you know, getting expulsions appealed, you know, it's just, it's an expense, obviously, and it's also kind of a, it prolongs this very uncomfortable period for the family and the district with this particular incident. So those are just concerns that I, as the IHO, have for the board, you know, but I want to be very, very clear that policy concerns I want to hear about all day long because I, ideally, you know, you guys are a diverse board, but my goal is to bring you recommendations that you don't have any problem with whatsoever. So I want to hear from you. It's just in terms of how we process that information and your input on a particular case.
Yes, because I see our policy exactly follows the state statutes, so, you know, verbatim. So you're saying maybe if we modify the policy, if we feel like there's a need to, if it's kind of vaping and that, I mean, you can't ever predict what they're gonna do. We've seen some crazy stuff, but maybe there is a bucket of, you know, like vaping, it's a minimum of this. Guns, you know, or you're out, but, or whatever it is. So buckets, maybe, or?
Well, and I encourage you to have those discussions, but also understanding that when students come to expulsion, you know, some students come with a very different background in terms of a disciplinary history. So you can get into a little bit of a quagmire if you put yourself into brackets, you know, of this offense requires this. And again, I am not a rocket scientist, and this is an art, not a science, in any event. But if, and again, I'm reiterating what I said about wanting commissioners to come to hearings because, and I always turn around and say, hey, did this go the way you thought it should go? Is there anything that I can learn from this experience in balancing the interest of the family and the interest of the district because, you know, we want to get it right?
And you always do. Thank you.
Anybody else? Commissioner Hanawal, do you have any questions?
No, I would just like to reiterate, and I've told you, Sarah, before, I think not only do you have the, an excellent skill set at what you do, but you possess the skill set of an established counselor in terms of the empathy you show, especially for some of our people who've suffered abuse, whether it's physical or sexual, and I've just been totally impressed at the hearing that I have had in, and I think we are all very grateful to have.
Thank you, Commissioner Hanawal.
Thank you. So I would say that also, I want to echo what everybody said about your work. I really appreciate it, and I appreciate how thorough it is, and of course, always the consideration of the possible manifestations. And so what I'm hearing from you, and I just want to make sure I understand this, that if there is, if we feel that the consequences for certain actions perhaps may be either too extreme or too lenient, really, before we ever even get there, this should be, we should sit it out by policy, what we think should, like, happen. Am I right about that?
It would be very helpful because I'd much rather hear at the outset than have disappointment at the conclusion of a hearing or when I present to the board to understand that I somehow didn't hit the right mark based upon your policy preferences. And I don't know if we can do that in like a bracket thing or just a discussion.
Right. I think, I find that, you know, there's certain things that, first, oh, you mentioned statute, right, about anything gun-related, okay? I'm always wary of zero tolerance things, you know, because we have to treat every student, you know, every situation like the unique situation that it is, even though maybe we've seen it, you know, a dozen times in some way or another. And that, because every student is different, and that we need to consider, you know, or you need to consider, we need to give you the freedom to look at the student. And so, you know, and I have to admit that while I've sat there, you know, in our conversations in some closed sessions, I have, you know, I've agreed with every, you know, everything that you always, I always agree with what you bring forward, and I really appreciate that. Sometimes it's still an incredibly hard, incredibly hard decision, you know? And so it's just such a tight rope walk to get it right and to, you know, to consider what the student needs and what the, and what all the students need within the district. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, last call. All right, thank you very much. Appreciate all your help. So our next item on the agenda is a discussion about the WASBA. This is the fall reading, Miss. This is not the state convention.
It's not state. This is just the fall reading.
Okay. And so this is about whether to provide direction to our voting delegate. I'm assuming that, that's you, right? Okay, okay. Do we have any questions or thoughts about that? Usually, I'm not even gonna say what we usually do, I'll just let you guys talk.
There's a little bit of background noise with Commissioner Hanawal.
Can I make a motion?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion that we send the delegate unencumbered to vote as he wishes or her wishes.
Do I have a second for that?
Second.
Okay. That was Commissioner Murray on sending our delegate unencumbered. And the second was from Commissioner Mallard. And so Commissioner Dahmerhausen, did you want to weigh in?
Yeah, I just want to clarify something. There are very little voting done at these. It's more of an informational and a chance to get to meet your fellow commissioners around Region 13, which is the largest region in the state of Wisconsin for a number of school districts that are involved. And it's really a lot of fun in that, meeting people and discussing and getting different ideas. I don't recall anything to have to be voted on in this one, but sometimes they surprise us. I just wanted to clarify that.
It's good to have us with us, you know, an understanding before you get sent there. And I was going to say, that's usually what we do, is we send our delegates unencumbered. And we trust our delegates to make decisions that are in the best interest of the district. It's Commissioner Dahmerhausen, so. Okay, any further discussion on this? All right. See, Anan, could we have our roll call vote, please? Commissioner Hayworth?
Yes. Sorry to let him know it's not you.
Commissioner Herta is absent. Commissioner Mallard?
Yes.
Commissioner Murray?
Yes.
Commissioner Paul?
Yes.
Commissioner Ardra is absent. Commissioner Dahmerhausen?
Yes.
Commissioner Hanawal?
Yes.
Commissioner Myers? Yes. That passes seven-zero. Thank you very much. Okay, we are up to the summary of board requests. So I did hear from a couple of commissioners wanting some more information about SROs, you know, and operations within the school and all that kind of stuff. And crossing guards were mentioned. And we will, I just want to let you know that we will put that on the November agenda. Okay? Anything else of that? Okay. All right, future meetings and dates. I know you gave this to me, but, yeah, if you don't mind.
The Finance, Buildings, and Grounds Committee meeting will meet this Thursday, October 13th, at 5:30 PM at Marshall Middle School in Room 2805. The next Board of Education meeting is on Tuesday, October 25th, at 6:00 PM here at the Educational Services Center. And the PPC committee meeting will meet on Monday, November 7th, at 4:30 PM here at the Educational Services Center.
Thank you very, very much. Okay, we've reached the end of our agenda, and we are adjourned. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Bye.